What will be the outcome if they're gonna quit doing our?
No, they will bill us. I, that's a question I asked, I said, "Well, what do you do with your commitments?" I mean, they told us that we couldn't bring our commitments there anymore unless we opened up that bank account. They said, "Oh, they still bill us, like, just like usual." So...
But you haven't talked to them, though?
No, I haven't talked to Bear County. I haven't talked to Bear County, but I know that it's been a big problem. So, I mean, if y'all want me to leave it open, I will leave it open.
Well, I, I just, I don't want to get caught with them not, you know, if, if, if you're certain about the, you know, that it will continue, I have no problem with those. But, but I, I don't want to have someone in the family and all waiting for that if, if it's not that way. You're saying that if it is...
That's what they're saying, that they bill the counties just like they used to. So, I'm gonna wanna table this till I get some...
Put you verified and then put it back on?
I will, okay.
That's what I'm...
I will do that.
Makes sense to close it, but I think we didn't verify it.
And, you know, maybe another way that'll work better is certainly is it... Item B, discuss and take action on two, 457 deferred compensation.
Okay. Um, this is a plan, it's a retirement plan for 457. The employees can take it out. It would be like a Aflac plan or it's, it's, but this was for retirement. It would benefit your retirement. It would go towards your retirement. And the employees can say, "Yes, they wanna take it out," and "No, they don't wanna take it out." And the county is not obligated for any money at all. It comes out of the employee's paycheck.
And, and how does it benefit them? Does it...
It's an, it's a, like a 401K, it's an retirement plan. Uh, the gentleman that came to see me is here today.
Thank you so much. My name is Roland Keith Danana from Nationwide Retirement Solutions. And what it is, is the program is essentially a pre-tax plan. So, it's a supplemental plan for TC DRS. So, it is, uh, it is completely voluntary. Um, if we can help five people, that's great. If the others choose not to go in the plan, that's also a, a choice and option to them. The minimum to start is a minimum of $10 deferrals out of the payroll. And then it would be up to that individual to invest it as they see fit. And Nationwide does have a, a secure account, uh, what's called a Nationwide fixed account, that does render a rate of 3.5 percent. So, it is something for a conservative investor, or if someone is seeking out higher rate of return, we can help them with that as well.
So, this is not related in any form or fashion to our existing retirement program?
No, no.
This is an option that would be...
That what an employee can, this would be a supplemental to their retirement.
And what about your ability to get to your money?
Ability to get to the money is, um, once you leave the county, it has no 59 and 1/2 for a life of 401K in the, in the private sector. So, you would then just fill out some paperwork and you have access to it if you want to get the money back. Of course, it is for retirement, so it is transferable as well to, to an IRA or another future employer's plan. So, it is completely flexible as far as, once leaving the county, they can get this money.
Oh, make motion that, um, that we open it up to the employees and it's strictly their decision, we're not endorsing it or, in any way, if, if their decision is more than I want to participate or what. Motion, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Fowle, on their favor?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
What's the maximum that you can contribute annually?
Uh, the maximum, if you're, uh, under 50 years old, is 17,500. If you are 50 and above, it's, uh, 23,000. If you are in the last three years of employment, it is up to 35,000. And it's all through payroll deductions.
Thank you.
But it is a percentage of the salary?
Pardon?
Is it a percentage of the salary?
Um, it is 25, 25 percent is the amount. Thank you.
I don't know if we prefer all that. We might do it as a group. Back all of that.
Item C, discuss and take action on 2014 retirement plan.
Okay, I got the retirement plan from TC DRS. And our required rate without the COLA is gonna be 9.2 percent this year. And if you wanna, I, I don't, I don't know if y'all want to give a COLA. That, the COLA is for, um, the retired cost of living adjustment for the, for the retirees. So, you, if y'all want to give a COLA, then y'all have to tell me, uh, how much of a percent of a COLA that you would like to, of cost of living adjustment for the retirees.
Is this even last year?
No. We haven't done anything to do with it.
So... How much is that 9.2 percent of from last year?
It was 8.9, yes. It was 8.9.
Is that, is that required to be wrote down today?
No.
Could you, uh, could you get us a number of retirees that we have and the different costs that might be?
Sure.
If we don't figure out the agenda, blame the city.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 20, call file, precinct number two, discuss and take action on view insurance agent IPS for last year.
Judge, I've been doing some extensive research, I've been doing the last probably two years. One thing I did find out, we don't have a personal so-called contract with a so-called agent. We have a policy with, uh, Humana Insurance. And I've been doing some research and between me and Jan and also the insurance, uh, the group, and I've come up and found that an agent that, to start off with, right off the bat, could probably say it was about $60,000 a year to start off with. And may not be a lot of savings, but to me, it's something. And, uh, discussing this with the insurance group, uh, majority of them feel like we've been moving in that direction, so...
And who is this agent?
IPS advisory.
Where are they located? Mr. Wilson behind you, Phil?
Yes, sir. Yes, actually, where our pork office is located now, I'm located in Houston, Texas. Uh, we have also branches in Austin as well.
Well, we have a open, a very open bid process here as far as insurance. Anyone is, is more than welcome to present a package to us without formal action. Can you do that?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's all, it's open to, to everyone that, that we, and has been forever, you know, to anyone that wishes to present a good package to, to, to the county.
By us moving forward and by selecting an agent, it can still be that way. But, I mean, there's no, we don't have, never have had a contract with a so-called agent to represent us. We don't pay an agent directly. This, with, by doing this, we would hire an agent.
I see no reason to hire an agent.
Well, I may disagree, but...
Uh, we, we, we have a very open bid process. And he's, he's just acknowledged that he's very willing to, to be, be involved in the bid process. And it's always based on the facts, the history and everything of our needs and claims and everything in the county. And this last time, we only had very minute amount of participation from people that wanted to bid on us. We've had some very catastrophic illnesses over the years for several years. The average age of your county population goes into, uh, the county's all is higher than your normal entities and things, and it all goes into the, the amount of, uh, cost as far as premiums, correct?
Correct.
So, I don't see anything that, that we would gain by hiring someone whenever we'd have the, the, uh, the, uh, ability to utilize everyone that wants to be prepared to make a bid to the county.
What are the advantages of having an agent?
We do all the bidding for you. Also, uh, it's been brought to our knowledge that y'all are currently paying a, a premium tax, which is actually exempt for municipalities and counties. Um, we did end up establishing a trust for y'all, so that way y'all would be paying tax on that. Right now, you're paying an additional $25,000 a year. You don't even need to be paying.
And, and the, what we're paying now, we have a flat, flat fee for this agent per year. Now, we pay a percentage of the premium. And, and if the premiums go up, that fee goes up.
Yes.
By hiring an agent, it does not, you have a flat fee?
Correct. Currently, you're paying 5 percent, um, in the commission. Every year, if your rate goes up 20 percent, you're paying an additional 5 percent on that 20 percent. Uh, currently, you're paying about $75,000 a year in commissions. By hiring us, or for a flat fee, you'd save an additional $25,000.
Well, I, I think we ought to reset and have everyone that has an interest in it to, to be here to present their package.
I agree with that. Well, I'd be, and I said, I've done my research. I just make a motion that we approve and hire IPS and Associates.
Motion is your second?
A second.
All in favor, item?
Aye.
Commissioner Morales, I didn't hear you vote.
No, we're for it.
You voted for it. Did I correct, Mr.? Item 21, Larry Wiley, Commissioner Precinct Number Four, review and approve solution, resolution in support of a motion to overturn TCQ's decision to grant Gordon Swenson's site number 710926 location. County Road 483, apply application of domestic. Do you have that?
I have it stuck here.
You want to read it? Bridget Seaford-Hatt, Chief clerk, ask the commission of environmental quality, post office box 13087, Austin, Texas, 711, 3087. Gordon Clifford Swenson, registration number 710926, Mr. Bob Allen. Wilson County is in receipt of the July 26, 2013 public notice regarding the final approval of a site in Wilson County where Gordon Clifford Swenson proposes to land applied domestic stuff, which Wilson County Commissioners Court have received several inquiries from citizens on the proposal. We, the undersigned, oppose the approval of this application in respect to the request that the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality not approve registration of this site. Our reasons include, Wilson County received a copy of the application, but it included clearly information details are needed to more clearly describe what processing of incoming sewage sludge stuff will be, will occur at the site, sources of the sewage sludge, and the design location of processing storage hangar and ancillary equipment. Item two, Wilson County Commissioners Court passed a resolution in opposition of the application on December 26, 2012, that states that the dumping of domestic waste within Wilson County boundaries and within close proximity to residents presents a danger of the health, to the health of our population, if contaminated drinking water. The sole final destination of this domestic waste is miles from its origin. Item three, Wilson County strongly requests TCQ to revisit the application and reverse the decision and, uh, as they sign signatures. Motion, Commissioner Wiley, and Commissioner Fowle, all in favor?
Aye. Uh, you should have the original over there. It might still be on that one, yes. It may be found. It's, it's within smelling distance of the, of the Nixon City Limits, perfect. Within smelling distance. And I've received a call recently from, uh, Allo Company, they're ready to grow. So, you're gonna have them putting stuff in all of these vehicles coming in and out. It, it's amazing to me, from, from our standpoint, as I've said before, if it, if we were considering this as a county, we would have to have a taking. Because when you look at the impact that it has economically, particularly the way our county's changing of all these little parks and so forth, you could potentially people out of business right there. It's just amazing.
Does it need to be jaded of Nixon?
He, I'm not sure, but it probably should be. It's just, I'd say a mile.
A mile, well, a mile.
About a mile from the Nixon State Limits to this property line?
Maybe 6,000 feet, something like that, but it's, it's, it's very close.
And, and when you look at how it's positioned, it's, you know, Highway 80 runs over here into Nixon. My county road runs right here, and it's right in between, so it's very close to 80, and all the houses back on the other side is...
Can, can we keep them going in the county road?
Nixon's 25.
Only if you got a bridge that we could build over it.
You got money for a bridge? And it's a mirror of that...
It does, it, it does, there is runoff off of that. Nixon's not down that.
You consider wanting to look at it, it's a for any, uh, simple...
For a bridge?
No, the, the...
A bridge to the north?
The route to Luke's left.
That was one of the places that we'd be, or more than...
And then, and then we'll give you a notation, and that'll make you so...
Yeah, let me see, Nixon's a little bit, the empty city street goes, they're going, going down that city street, city streets, maybe a quarter mile, it's that much, you know, we don't say more. Wilson and Rook, and...
Is that for you? What's the representative name from Caldwell County? Smith? I'm not sure. Oh, would you, the, the representative from Caldwell County? He has both farms and Guale County, did you? Make sure he gets that.
It's good solid salary, they're, they're on board, I'm sure.
Well, he, he's the state rep for them, I was kind of, and, uh, met with him sometime back over there, thought that they're, they're, uh, might be an asset, had been a former...
That would be nice. So, may I say?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate.
Dr. Story is one of them.
I just want to express my gratitude. It's a very serious matter, and I, I appreciate your, your efforts.
Thank you, thank you, your efforts. Item 22, the annual charter MC, item eight, temporary water lines.
There's several temporary water lines in several different county roads, all of them precinct two. Is that correct? Yes.
One on 541, side of one through seven on there. Does anyone have a, a need for us to lay out the numbers of the roads, the water lines that we don't have, so we go, or if not, we'll move on to some information?
It's a drive, we don't even have temporary water.
Going on item B, utility permits, county one precinct, county four 74, southern twenty roads, county precinct three, county road 356, county road 361.
This has already been, um, reviewed by Commissioner Morales.
Motion, Commissioner Morales, yes, sir. Second, Commissioner Fowle, all in favor? Item C, pipe nine, Carlson, number 58, EOG Resources, precinct two, county road two, old nine, can we take them all three together?
Yes.
For the two?
No, these are...
Five, nine, Carlson, number fifty, number fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty, all EOG Resources, and the county roads two oh nine, two sixteen, two oh seven. Motion, Commissioner Fowle, second, Commissioner Morales, all in favor? 2014 collection event, item one, discuss and take action on, and what would be collected?
This, uh, is an event that we will probably schedule in the fall. Uh, we said the date will be on the, the next agenda item, but, um, and it's not going to be granted this year. Uh, the grant period hasn't opened up to even being able to apply for a grant. So, this will be the first year that we budget it for. I believe San Jimmy and Richard already was going, uh, to address some of the portions of the event that they would be willing to fund.
There's two things. Um, the Allo RC and D have received some S and Bs, some special, supplemental project funds in an amount of 5160, in fact, that's a hundred and sixty dollars, that can be applied to the HHW portion of the event in Wilson County. Um, as far as the rest of the cost, we would be willing to, like, the last time where it kind of pays for, say, one type of waste, we could work on that. But we'd like to do the same, and try to do a better concrete work, and thank you.
So, what we typically collect, um, we do everything is household hazardous waste, electronics, tires, and water soups. Uh, household hazardous waste includes oil, batteries. So, if we have, uh, a small amount for HHW, then y'all would do the HHW?
We could, you know, like, say, if y'all want to say, consider a few ways to get it, like, you want to...
How much oil? I know this is a question that probably neither one of you can answer, but how much oil do we typically get at one of these events?
On the head, I can't tell you.
Quite a bit, we was last time. We had, we were talking...
How big is that?
200 gallons? More than that, 500? There was one guy that like brought five barrels.
Five barrels of oil.
So, we have, the only reason I'm asking is that I have a tank for whole oil that will hold 500 gallons.
Pushing, yeah.
They feel one up, you know? And we had two barrels left over or something.
Because what we do is we collect it, and we sell it back, and we do too.
So, then, uh, we will do a full collection for HHW, electronics, tires, and water soups. Y'all want to decide today what the county's gonna fund and what Sarah would fund, or you wanna do that at a later date?
What's the prospect cost?
Uh, let's see. Last year, we had one full event, one additional tire event, and then one additional, what did we do in May, which I'll do? Did we do everything in May? Okay, two full events. So, everything that was done last year totaled up to 51,000, 57 dollars.
With two full events?
Everything with two full events and an extra tire collection.
So, we're looking at 20 to 25,000?
Depending on, yeah. Tires, we had, uh, 14,800 dollars worth of tires, electronics was 45, 49, and then HHW was 31, 748.
What did we pay for it this past year?
Now, because we had quite a bit of grant.
But Sarah's gonna contribute 5,160 dollars.
That's gonna be from Illinois.
Okay, so, so that comes off the top, so it's, so we're looking at roughly 25,000 dollars when you cut them in half. So, you're looking at 20,000 dollars, more or less, before we start, potentially to see who's gonna do what.
The, the most expensive is the HHW. And the first event, uh, let's see, in December was 14,725 dollars. And then the event that we did in May was 17,000.
For HHW?
For HHW. So, your HHW is, is all instead of...
If, if that was where?
Uh, in December.
In the second event?
Was Floris though?
Also, I think, uh, to go to make an interlocal agreement also with the cities, where we have in that event, and maybe they take first two, or some money also.
I mean, by once before, it seems...
And it sounds good, but...
Now, they have provided what they think, they provided the roll-off.
The roll-off and that. Oh, any little bit, anyway. They keep providing these up.
Yeah.
It's up to the commissioner to talk to them before that, before we're gonna have it.
So, decide today who's gonna fund what, or think about it?
I don't know what they're gonna fund, dude. I mean, what do we... Okay, I, I guess my question about making a decision today is if, if you can come back to us looking at this with more specific numbers, so that we know from Sarah what it is that they would participate, then that would probably make more sense than, because we know that, no, we, we know we have 5,160 dollars. And we know that Sarah is gonna participate, um, to a degree in the course of this. And so, it would be nice if, if the two of you could get together and come back with a proposal that says, "Okay." Is, is that a problem?
For example, last, uh, last event, the county committed to e-waste, you committed to a certain amount, I don't know, 2,500, people like that. So, you committed to a certain amount for e-waste, and then you said, you took care of it, and I think that's reasonable.
That's easy. If that sounds good, I'll hear you say it.
And then we do the tires?
Tires and that.
Or what?
That's, that's up to, that's up to y'all. We, we, we want tires to, to definitely be collected, so, but...
But on, on this event, there's only certain tires before then, the regular tires, not the tires.
No tractor tires, only the truck tires.
Well, and, and it's rent, and it's, this won't be rent, but it's... So, y'all wanna do tires and electronics, and then they do the HHW and water soups?
That'd be fine.
Okay. Well, what's it going, tires? So, tires and electronics.
And that's gonna come as a profit award.
For all the events that we had last year, the tires and electronics will be about 19,000 to 20,000.
About 20,000.
And is that before or after the 5,160? Or does that...
That's not included, but 5,160 has to go for HHW.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Now, we set up a special fund for this.
Yes, we have.
So, that's not...
Which I would be able to do tires and electronics. And if it's going to be tires, and if they're going to do the household hazardous waste and pharmaceuticals.
And then if we run over on tires, I may can do what we've done before. Let's split it between the four presidents. So do we need to go along?
On what you're going to have first?
On things, the e-waste?
Well, yeah, if y'all want to make a motion, how long the county pays for the electronics and tire portion of the production event, and San Antonio River Guardi will fund the HHW, um, and pharmaceuticals. And the, the five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars in SAP funds will go towards the HHW collection portion.
Item two, does take action on big time, will take action.
Okay, uh, between their availability and ours, we're looking at November ninth. And it would be timed to have it in Stockdale.
Is he going to be there this time?
I don't know.
But you don't have to be.
Ah.
And, uh, what do y'all want to do, eight to noon, nine to noon?
Eight to noon.
Eight to noon.
We're going to set it up for where we come in that, uh, the gate off of Dameron Street and then go out the other gate, remember how, how much? Well, that's the one when you come into...
At the light, and you just kept going?
Yeah, you just sort of angle off and go up and come in that gate?
Okay.
And then go around and then they can go through to all the stations and then go out the back side.
What was it, November two?
Nine.
Saturday, November ninth, at eight to noon, at this, uh, in Stockdale, at precinct four yard.
You want to be making that?
No, I'm sure I'm headed that thing.
Motion is on November ninth, uh, eight to noon at, uh, Stockdale, where it's going to be.
Boy, you go bring bill with you.
A dozen, maybe?
Thank you, sir.
I don't mean just for yourself.
Item E, recycling program kick off.
Okay, we're finally ready to kick off the recycling program. For Saturday, August twenty-fourth, at nine o'clock.
Oh, and this is what you're requiring?
Yes, on the back, you'll see what, what can and cannot be collected.
More wire hanging.
Do the honors properly.
There's a warmer in the measure than what they got on the back.
I'm going to do a mass email out to my channel to give us, uh, of the flyers. Everybody will have it, y'all can print them up, post them in your offices.
It will be, uh...
So you can put paper glasses.
Thank you, sir.
One bag.
Correct. Put it all in one... Make yourself up a trash can, or...
Cardboard boxes have to be broken down.
Is easier?
Easier, they don't have to be, but it's better if they are. Take up too much space. Also, Judge, when this thing gets kicked off, I like to recommend it, even for the county, all the waste products, paper products, we use over there, we're taking over there and sell to the dumpster. You know, we got, what, three or four dumpsters behind the sheriff's office, so they put all of the, you know, paper products through. Actually, often quite good. You know, no happy days, we all put in that dump. The, uh...
Things for like aluminum cans, maybe? That's what I'm saying, paper boxes, trucks, they can have paper boxes and, you know...
And we have to get some bigger cans or something, you know, for the courthouse or for the...
You know, it would be nice, because we could, you know, we have just one place to drop off the other.
The location?
The other stuff we can do ourselves, we can flatten our boxes and, you know, we've got paper that you can't throw away. You wouldn't, it's not, yeah.
The, uh, location of Stockdale is going to be at, uh, the elementary school in the parking lot, directly across from the bank. And it will be open daily, as it says here, from eight to three. So essentially, school hours, and it will be open, um, if school's closed for the summer, it'll be closed during the week before the summer. It will be operated Saturdays from, um, eight till moon with volunteers. And, um, it's pretty exciting. Now, we were going to have an event, uh, on the twenty-fourth, you were going to talk about.
We wanted to do a, a kickoff and invite, I'll be looking to attend that and do a little rhythm cutting at the Florisville location.
It was nine o'clock?
Like the schools, yes, that's why we have nine o'clock on the flyer, because we'll...
What day? The twenty-fourth?
Yes, Saturday, Saturday, the twenty-fourth, at nine o'clock.
Ralph, you can bring your plastic, you can bring your plastic models to the thing.
We've got, we have recyclables here, so everybody can throw something in.
Did you bring stickers? Did you bring any stickers?
No, I did not bring stickers.
We have some really neat stickers that Leon put together for, uh, for the children. Makes them a recycling ranger.
I meet the height of the continent.
And the one in Florida is going to be actually monitored by the alternative center.
But that's going to be inside the campus or outside the, where the...
Outside.
It's going to be outside the, uh...
Open all, all the time, to the public. And they're going to monitor it daily. And then all the proceeds will go to the, like, Florida one, go to the alternative school. And I give, to the other one, go to five minutes. And the one in Pope is already going to fit in the rest.
There's some additional flyers here, coming up, the big lady wanted to take some.
So if you recycle, here's your, uh, here's your opportunity, and if you don't, here's the chance to...
So we're going to, we're going to have a recycling page on the website, John and I are going to go tomorrow morning, and, uh, get that built. So after probably Wednesday, uh, when you go to the Wilson County page, there will be a recycling tab, and y'all can click on that, and we'll have updated information for flyers and anything else available at that time. We'll have additional information, location maps and such.
Ralph, do you have something?
Yeah, one of the concerns I have, I've been recycling for over twenty years, and you could get in glass, glass is a problem. If you have a low, some places are going to have to come like a low area, you just set glass in. These things, it just makes you pretty, you know, tall. How do you get the glass in? Just toss it in, was it great? Does that matter?
Don't matter. You can be all pieces, broke, whatever. Doesn't matter.
It's going to get broken anyway when they pull it on.
I just, I keep thinking, there's a people, I got a conveyor belt going on, these people doing all this stuff, because all this glass shards in there.
Okay, item L, nonstandard, class of variance, eleven twelve, county road three sixty-two, road of Goose, review approved.
This is a variance that came before the committee. Um, on the first end, was given a favorable recommendations. Gentleman owns piece of property, is dividing into two tracts. And a tract that was an issue that was not going to be compliant would have, uh, because it didn't have road, but it was actually being sold to a adjoining landlord. Yes, it was given a favorable recommendation.
Okay.
Commissioner Wallace, Commissioner Morales, all of them.
Alright.
You cut to this?
Item G, text dot, probably, on sign line, does take action?
Um... Oh, Ms. Gumm has told me about this, contacted text dot, and due to budget cuts, they, they were required to cut their budget by a certain percentage. And so they will not be replacing advance notice signs. Uh, if they get stolen or wrecked or whatever. And that would be signs like...
Stop, foul, with intersection.
Well, no, like, like a Griggle Lake Drive or county road such that many people know ahead of time that, you know, that road is coming up. They would not be replacing those signs. Believe that's a concern with all...
It's definitely a concern, because the areas, the, the areas where we've put them, from a nine-one-one standpoint, it's critical.
Yep.
You know, the, the, from, from a convenience standpoint of delivery folks and so forth, being able to recognize a, a subdivision, uh, where it's located, that's fairly critical. But from a nine, nine-one-one standpoint, it's, it's very critical.
So I got, I got at least ten signs already missing that.
Is it going to maintain the ones with the intersection?
Now, they will, if there's a intersection of a, of a text dot highway and a county road, they will maintain the sign at that intersection, on top of that stop sign or yield sign. They will maintain that. But the advance warning means no. The ones that tell you to nip a subdivision off. The ones that say like, uh...
It's the Department of...
Department of Public Safety or, or, or the ones in front of the sheriff's office building, driver's license office, those signs. Once they're, you know, they get stolen or somebody runs into them and they're destroyed, they're not going to replace them.
When Commissioner Gammas brought this to my attention, I guess it was Thursday, uh, it seemed that, one, we wanted to put it on the agenda, but to consider maybe for her next court to have a resolution of some sort, perhaps, that we would send to, uh, to our representative, which is communicated from a nine-one-one standpoint, that that's a fairly critical item in our opinion that, that they've taken away.
Now, this, it's, it's a text dot decision to do this.
But doesn't it, but if they can't lobby, lobby with text dot?
But it's due to budget cuts.
And the state does the budget cut, no?
Right.
And if they don't, and if they don't, if they don't...
They're not able to do it, right?
I mean, you can't, yeah. And so are we allowed, if, let's say they don't change, are we allowed to maintain that sign on pay right away?
Well, that's what we have to talk to, uh, that guy from text dot. And make an agreement with them.
I don't want to bother you. I don't either, but that's another thing that's going to be...
Yeah, that's that many more signs you can replace.
And they're expensive, those signs.
They're a whole lot different than what we are.
Yes.
Says any additional cost incurred by the county, I guess that's what this is.
No, no, that's, that's, I jumped the gun.
You jumped the gun, I thought you had something on that.
Because they get expensive, because they, they got different poles, and then they got that brick away hole and everything.
I don't know if y'all want that responsibility, but anyway, that's just something to bring to y'all.
Any action y'all wish to take on that?
Do you want to put it on the next agenda?
I think we should. Well, I, I think we should just do, I would assume, a resolution just expressing, communicating to our representatives, uh, both, uh, local and state, that from a nine-one-one standpoint, this is something that could pose profit. And a very minimal part of it, but ask them to do what they...
He had the official, uh, certification on that.
It was nothing that they could give me, it was an inter-office memo that was done, it wasn't...
And I told them to give us the, the list of all the signs and everything, that...
That don't sound like... Well, it sounds like it's not very efficient. They, they, they're going to pull it up and see if it, see, see if it's okay, if it's okay, if it's fine.
I thought I told them to give us something on where it's like that.
What if we talk, who can we talk with?
Him. Lord.
We maybe need to talk to the district manager, district manager here, and see if that's actionable.
That's worth the concern, starting...
Do you have any ACOG meetings with those big ones coming up?
I don't think we have any scheduled this time. RPO.
Well, I don't feel like we should let it, let it lie down.
No.
And what we probably ought to do is we ought to communicate to the other, uh, local counties and see if they do the same thing.
As a court, or, uh, perhaps, uh, if someone, you wanted to make a presentation to the ACOG judges, uh, area judges, maybe, get on the ACOG cog agenda, make that, and ask for a resolution of ACOG, uh, that would encompass all of them.
When is the next meeting, do you know?
It's the last, something's given on. That's the way we was able to get the helicopter in San Antonio, uh, replaced.
That would be the twenty-eighth.
I'll make a motion, we got Commissioner Wallace. Give the presentation.
Second, I'll say.
You guys are just so kind.
Be one vote.
I need some information, so you guys can...
Item H, revision of this council division, development rules and regulations. Item M, revision language regarding interoperability of discussion action.
We've got several different provisions that relate into the subdivision regulations, but it was not anything that constituted a thinking impact analysis to be done.
Can we take them all at one time? If anybody wants to, uh, go down. You go over what you have, you know, all of that.
I, I gave y'all each a copy of the additional language. One of them was the additional in costs incurred by the county for review of, uh, for review or subsequent review of a development, that those costs will be, uh, responsibility of developer. Another one is an interoperability clause, uh, basically stating if you've got a development that falls, uh, under, uh, another set of regulations, whichever regulations are more stringent, they apply. Another one is if somebody comes, uh, an individual is requesting a variance or a nonstandard plat from the county, that if their request is in opposition to any covenants and restrictions on that piece of property, that the, uh, county would not approve a variance of that sort. And prior to presentation of the roads for acceptance by the county, the developer will have to provide proof of their access to you, just like they do at the onset of the development. So that's a synopsis of the four provisions.
Want to, uh, to call you? Commissioner Gumm, second. Commissioner Wallace, all of them.
Alright.
Mr. Wallace, uh, I had you sign in on the long term, before you go, would you sign? The other rules of meeting, uh, you can make comment under the comment. The other rules of meeting, uh, you make a comment on the public comment, we cannot address, answer your comments at this time, but you've got the floor. I dispute some of the things that gentlemen told y'all earlier. We have checked with Humana, the lady's been there twenty-five years, she's never heard of this twenty-five thousand dollar fee that he was telling y'all about. I would like to see some, I think you need to see some proof about that before you move forward. We do not make seventy-five thousand dollars in commission. I don't know where he got that fee from, but we do not make seventy-five thousand dollars, I wish we did. I didn't hear him discuss what he was going to do for you, or what he was going to charge. I think there were a lot of things that were left out here that should be investigated before you move forward. Diane and I have been your agents for a number of years, we've done you a good job, we don't lie to you, we're straight up front. And we let anybody quote, we just quote, as the judge was saying earlier, if he wants to submit a proposal, submit a proposal. But everybody has a chance, have a chance, it's your business. Diane is a taxpayer in your county, and I think that should be a big consideration. This guy's out of Houston, is he going to drive up here and take care of a problem when you have a problem like Diane and I do? When there's a problem, when Jan calls or somebody calls, we come over here and we take care of the problem. We work for Wilson County. We do not work for Humana, Blue Cross, ATNA, United Healthcare, any of them, we work for Wilson County, and we always have. And the next thing is, Diane and I have always told you straight up, and, uh...